August meeting of the Buckeye Valley Board of Education. Can I get a roll call, please?
Sure. Mr. Alboni?
Here.
Mrs. Pembroke? Here. Mr. Dickey?
Here.
Mrs. Scouted? Here. Jeffrey?
Here.
Shall we all rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, I would like to make a motion to amend the agenda. I remember this morning, we did not add in the consent agenda an item to revise our approval of the Buckeye Valley Middle School Golf Club. It had been approved as a girls' club, and we needed to make it for all the students. I think we had a lot, a lot of girls and boys show up for that. So I'll make a motion to amend the consent agenda, adding, adding item 5.19 to include the boys in our Buckeye Valley, our approved Buckeye Valley Middle School Golf Club.
I'll second.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mr. Alboni?
Yes.
Mrs. Pembroke?
Yes.
Mr. Dickey?
Yes.
Mrs. Scouted?
Yes.
Jeffrey?
Yes.
Would it be easier for you today if I did a all in favor, say aye?
Yes.
Okay.
That'd be fantastic.
All right, we'll do that today.
Perfect.
Does anybody else want to add anything to the agenda? Very good. I will make a motion to approve the revised agenda as presented.
I'll second.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, say nay. Hearing none, the motion passes. Can I get any motion to approve the minutes from our July meeting, please?
I move that Buckeye Valley Board of Education approve the attached minutes upon the recommendation of the treasurer.
Thank you, Tom.
I'll second.
Troy. All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, say nay. Hearing none, motion passes. All right, we are on to public participation on agenda items, which we have none, so we will roll right into the district update. I have asked Mr. Reader to give us a quick update on the middle school roof and the status of the transfinder for the buses.
Cassie, do you want me to grab the microphone?
It helps, yes.
That helps.
Right on there.
Good evening, Board of Education, Rex Reader, Assistant Superintendent. Excited to be working with all of you and giving you updates. I think what you'll find with me, I'm pretty straightforward and give you what you need to know. But I want you to know how I do things too on some of this. First, the middle school roof is not done. Yes, the date, the updates, and I will give you that now, is right now. We've been waiting on another membrane part for the back and front of the roof. If you look at it, it's now turned from green to gray. It looks beautiful. Your Assistant Superintendent, yes, was on the roof. The other day, I had to go up on an escalator. They took me all the way to Taco Bell. It was at a King's Island ride. But I did get up there. I did see it. It is great. But there are some concerns right now in timing. We were told in multiple meetings that it would be done by this week. That has not happened. So we're working with our owners rep and 5K Roofing to finish that. So right now, I do see some gray on the two birched areas. That's what they're waiting on, and there's still some gutters and some other work to be done. So we have had people on site. I do want the board to know, we were told before, it's just based on weather. But we did find out, because I will go and ask people constantly, that we're waiting on materials. Right now, it's late, so we're working through that. So I am on them right now. My understanding, I just got an update, is the last and final walkthrough will be September 4th for us to go up on the roof and see that. So that will be my expectation. But I will have Dr. Strang just send something out to you. I can, just based on, I did ask them, I just need the completion date because we do have many concerns. I don't, guys, I'm not about being nice as a business. So it's about us getting Buckeye Valley best quality. And I do expect higher standards here. So I just need to know when that's going to be done. So I did ask 5K, the director and president, to ask right now when will be done? Because I do want you to know, it's holding up kids from going out back. It's holding kids from going out front. I've walked that and seen those areas. So I do have some concerns with that. So the delay is hurting us. We've been told multiple times that it's going to be done. So I'm working through that, and I will keep you updated. So that's where we are at the roof. Yes, sir.
The September 4th walkthrough, is that, I know there's some ground that has to be reworked out back from the equipment. Is that, that done as well? Or is that just roof is done? And then there's going to be some cycle?
I asked them for the final, which I will send out. I want to make sure that's done. I hope the final we're waiting on is the final. We have an inspector that has to come out and clear it. So that's the idea, the final part for us. So my goal is hopefully that's done before that. Hopefully, 5K will be done. We're just waiting on that inspector until September 4th.
Okay.
I will give you an update once I know we're in constant conversation with them. Because that's probably number one concern right now, to get that done.
I have a question too.
Yes, sir.
I know it's not related to the timing necessarily, but, so this question's come up. So when we do the middle school addition, is any of that going to have to be redone? Or how would that affect?
The roof shouldn't affect that plan at all. So once that's done, that project's done, and we'll go to the next project. Any other questions on the roof? Okay, transfinder, the bus. I do want you to know, I do have experience, and I am very excited about it. I do want the board to know that. I think it's a great thing to be able to track my parents to know where the bus. I do in the district that I'm in, my kids are in. We actually have something else, and we do watch them constantly. So the parents do know when their kids are getting there, the bus is getting close, et cetera. So transfinder, where we're at. Again, I was dealt this, so I, here's where I'm at with it. We have trainings coming up in September for us and the staff. You can say, and you're fine to ask me the question, Rex, did that happen summer, could we get ready at school year? I can answer those if that's what you want to know. But right now, where we're at is, because I'm always going to be straight and tell you what it is. Right now, the trainings, I've been told September, October, we will be done with that. I want the board to know, I'm into soft starts or phases. So what I would like to do is do it on two or three buses, have those go out, communicate to those parents, get feedback, see what's wrong, see what we can fix, see if we have any internet shortage areas. That's the biggest issue, we're slow in certain areas. I'm just being honest with you. And as a parent, I'm in an area that does that. I kind of just realize, hey, it's going to be slow, and then it pops back up. So we, that's a concern, but I want to check all those out. I want to get all of those kinks out before I send it out to everybody. Latest timeframe it would happen, goal would be in December, probably second semester. The earliest, which I'm going to push, once I get through a couple other projects, is sooner. But I would like to start phasing that here, probably in October. Do a couple of those minimally. I just need to see the training, make sure the staff, all the buses are equipped, we're ready to go. Now it's just getting it out, being ready to go. Communication plan through Cassie, we'll work through that and get that all to parents. But I will give you an update once we're ready to go.
This should work pretty well, even if internet's pretty low, because it uses mainly GPS, right?
It should. That's what I'm being told. So that's what I want to ask them. But I have a full set of questions for the company, because this is one I haven't used, so I just want to see. And I wasn't in the initial. So I just want to see, and I'll bring those back to you. And I'll probably give you some documents. Here's all the questions, here's all that. I like to give you data or show you, here's where we're having issues. And I'll put in your hands any questions you see. But the phase in is something we want to do. We talked about food service, some other things. I really want to do phases. I like to soft start things, see what goes wrong, and then we'll get it out to every parent. And I think people will respect that as we go forward. I've seen good. Anytime we change anything, that's been a good system we've changed for people. Any questions on those two things?
I appreciate the phase in.
I'm prepared to.
Yeah.
To be honest with you, I, we've been in this game before. You know, a lot of change, you're talking to somebody. I mean, I think when you do think soft starts, people respect that. If I throw it out to everybody, I'm going to get a lot of calls from different sides. Let me just figure out those and try to make it look as first class. Our goal, especially with me in charge of this, is first class and everything we can for parents, be communicative, take feedback. I want their feedback, negative, good, the bad, and ugly, which is great. But that's important to us. I just really want that feedback, so I can make a right for them. Because I think it's important for parents to know where their kids are. So we're going to be excited with that. Any other questions on anything?
While we have you here, can you tell us a little bit about the school lunch stuff? We talked about, we heard it was impossible.
So school lunch is not impossible. I always love, just so the board knows, when they say it can't, it can't be done. That's my very line. But that, that will be, that's a whole other story for another day. But the key is, is that right now, I want you to know that the food, what we're looking at, I did talk to Stacy, the food director on this, Dr. Strang just and I. Here's where we're at. To start, the plan is this right now. We're going to go out to some other districts that are doing this with fresh foods and all of this, and try to see. I like to gather data, see what they do, see, come up with a plan. Why wouldn't we recreate the wheel without somebody if somebody's already doing it? Give me some ideas. That'll help us have less error. So after that, what I'd like to do is start maybe one lunch a month in the four different buildings. Just try it. And then what I would like to do is, we're going to take data, because we are doing very well, by the way, in food service, Stacy. And, you know, Kelly can tell you that, hey, we're doing very well financially, and we're in the black. Most districts are not. But we want to look at this. So I would like to phase it in again, something soft, start something, see how many kids buy lunch to, see how many kids are interested in, get some feedback from our parents, see what they're thinking. And then I would bring data back to you and try to see where we are. If we want to do this more, we are more than willing to try. It's just, we want to make sure we're in the black, make sure our kids. And with the, I want you to know, the bottom of the Clinton law, I have to put certain things on the plate. I can't just choose not to. And that's, that's something we have to do. So that's the law. But we want to incorporate some of those things into our meals. The cooks would love to cook if we have time. But let us try to phase in with one, come back to you with some data. Because, you know, if kids aren't interested in not buying, that's probably not something we want to look at. But we always want to make our meals healthier for our kids and try to teach them those habits. So I'll come back to you with data. So answer any question. It's not impossible. It's just steps to put in place to make it happen. That's what we want to do.
Rex, I know you're coming on this, you know, I know that we've had some frustrations. This is something we've wanted to see approved for a while now. I mean, is that, at the next meeting, can you kind of give us an update?
Yeah, I will. To be honest with you, you know, I always shoot straight. I've got four or five projects. I'm trying to track the safety plans in every single building. It's 80 pages, just so you know. And they were due and we're behind, so I've got to get those in. But I'm on those, so I will work through those. I think the next board meeting, what I can do is get you some info. We'll go out and see these, and then we'll try to come up with some idea of what we're going to do. Transfinder, I'll meet with them in September. We'll try to get them in sooner. Then I'll give you an update where we're at. I need to see the system. I don't think it's going to take that long. I just need, I don't think we need this much training. But I need to see what the company says. And then the middle school roof, I should have that done for you by the next meeting. If not, then it'll be even funner for them. So that's where I'm at.
So Rick, you've known Rex all this time, and you just held back? You didn't bring him then?
You know, Rex has been here one week.
I know. It's like three months.
The fence has been actually fixed. Safety, safety in every building has been inspected. We have big plans to try to do that. Two of the bus loops that weren't being used around the buildings are now being used. So looking at middle school drop off, we'll see you guys in the morning.
If you want to brief, I can tell you on those quickly. I don't want to take your time. But if you, I mean, the busing, you heard on the west side, we're hiring another bus driver. I'm not having kids on the bus for an hour both ways. I want to respect our drivers, because we respect all of our employees to the highest. That's our number one job, is to take care of them also. But we're, we're getting bigger in certain areas. So we're going to do that. We're going to look, we hired a bus driver to be able to take another route. That's going to help us over there. West, we are allowed to go behind the building. It was blocked off. We were told we weren't allowed to by the fire chief. I just called him, and now we are. So we're allowed to do that, so that should save us some time on that end. So I think that's important. We did do a safety walk today on every single door. Thank you, Cassie, for doing that. Every door has a double latch, double pane, and we need to take one of them off to be safe. And you can ask why. I'm not, I can tell you probably another time. But we don't want anybody to block doors. So we're going to take care of all the exterior first to make sure that's up to date. But the busing, we're on. We're watching the custodial also. Thanks, Kelly, in the 5, the 5-8 building. I mean, right now, we have another great level in there, so we have more work. So we're watching that as we're going forward. But we're going to each building and looking at whatever. I've walked through every single building to try to see what the principal, because feedback's very important. Staff feedback, student feedback, and parent feedback will help us get answers that we want to bring to you. And we worked on that fence on the field too, so we're getting over there. If you have what you got. Talked to Chip many times. Thank you. Anything else? I'll take care of it. Okay, thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Rex. We also started our, our year. Convocation went well. First day of school, we went to every building. Brian and Rex and I visited every building. Made sure we walked through, said hi to everybody. And it was a great start in every building. We're proud of what we have and how we've started. So it's going to be better. We've got a weekend. I know Old Tangy has a day in. We have a weekend. It's gone well. So the next move too is to present a new organizational chart to, to the board. And I've been working on that, and I'll have that for you this September meeting.
All right, we will move into the financial items. Make a motion to approve the attached financial report, please.
I move that Buckeye Valley Board of Education approve the attached financial report at the recommendation of the treasurer.
On the second?
This is our July. We kicked off a new fiscal year in July. Biggest, I don't want to say change, it's just that, so the property taxes, I was able to receive in advance on the property taxes from the county in July. Which, what that means, it's, yes, it's in advance, but it's, it's the money that they collect on Buckeye Valley's behalf. They just, I sent an email, and then every Friday, they make a draw. So that way, in the month, in the month of July, I was able to receive the advance. In August, I will get the final collection for the rest of the half of the year. So that's the only blip where the graph shows a little different than budgeted, because I was able to receive the advance. But nothing else out of the ordinary. To start off fiscal, fiscal 2026 year.
Do you have any questions? All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, nay. Hearing none, the motion passes. We are on to the consent agenda. Make a motion to approve the consent items as presented, please.
Motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Thank you. Second?
I'll second.
Thank you, April. Dr. Strang?
Thank you. So 5.2 is to authorize me to approve home instruction. We do that in general. We don't have to do every single home instruction request. So that is 5.2. Obviously, you need someone to be the instructor. And we are recommending Heather Walter to take that role on for this year. And she will do so. And as students have medical needs or other needs, she'll be the one that instructs them. 5.4, we have a couple of resignations that we've already approved. That's why they're on there. Tim Harold, boys JV golf. Life is retired, so I think he changed his mind. And George Harmon, a bus driver, who's been out for a while, so he'll be. Classified substitutes in 5.5. We have six of them. Happy to see that, that number increasing. 5.6 is classified employment. We are hiring, as Rex said, another bus driver, Jason Hampton. We got him from Old Tangy. And he'll be starting that extra route to relieve some of that overcrowding, especially with the west routes. It'll help us. And 5.7, certified substitutes. We do this to the ESC. We go ahead and do this, but they're the ones who manage our substitutes. But we do approve that. And 5.8, certified employment. We have Kaylee Cook, first grade teacher. Has a great background in anthropology. Graduated from the University of North Carolina at Chapel Hill. Happy to have her join us. And Rebecca Carlson. We took her from Reynoldsburg City School. So happy to have both of those. They've both started and are ready to go. And 5.9, we're approving the bus stops and bus routes for the 25-26 school year. We do that yearly. There are 111 routes that you can see, 204 square miles, and the bus drivers a route. So that's, those are all the routes that we've laid out for you.
So if we have, I, can I, if we are hiring another bus driver, do we have to replace?
We do.
So we have to actually, so that's not a question?
Yeah, we're good.
Okay.
Yep.
We have a few extras on that.
Yeah, we have two or three.
We do.
So yes, thank you. Good question. 5.10, supplementals. The first group of 14 are new. And then the remaining were adjusted. As you remember, last time, it said according to the new contract. We just didn't have the data yet. Now we do. So those who are not all new, we've already done it, but under the new contract to be approved. 5.11, volunteers. We have Keith Cooper, middle school football. Happy to have Keith join that staff. And 5.12, administrative staff pay raises. And Stacy Peterson is our food service director. She's not actually an administrator, but she's a 260 employee. So we classify it on the administrative contract. School resource officer is 5.13. We are so pleased that we have this relationship with the Delaware County Sheriff's Department. And it's a three-year agreement. We are 50%, and they pay 50%. They do a great job in our buildings. That's SRO agreement and MOU. See those contracts before you. 5.14 is the resolution requiring the continuation of a five-year forecast that Kelly does. The legislature gives us that choice, three years, five years. We're going to go with the five-year forecast. She does a great job with that. And 5.15, overnight field trip. You can see one of those happened last weekend, and I went ahead and, and met with them and did the approval. But between 8Ds, that got lost, and should have been here at the last bump. But that's not, and FFA camp, which is a great one that they do every year, will be coming up in September. 5.16, Cardinal Rehab is our special ed services. We approved that contract with them. See that contract before you. 5.17 is a waiver. A lot of the programs that Cardinal does are community oriented. And they want to be able to take kids to those community programs to, to work through. So that's what we're allowing that waiver to do, which we've definitely had. 5.18, Meta Solutions. We're sitting bids for a school bus. And it's just for them to advertise, if we're looking for two buses, that they'll do the work for us to advertise those buses. And then 5.19, we're going to add boys to our middle school golf club. We've added the girls. And as President Dickey said, it's got very good traction and potential. That's the consent agenda.
5.1, 5.12, we need to amend to, say, approve the following for the 25-26 school year? Or is this for the 24-25 school year?
No, it's the 25-26.
Okay.
Yes.
So you can change that, please. 5.12.
5.12, okay.
And 5.14 is, was that a request from, from you, from, from Dr. Strang?
It was kind of from, from, I guess, is it my treasurer cohort? Is that we're comfortable doing five? We like doing five. And that we understand that the state of Ohio is only requiring three, but we would like to, we like to supersede the minimum. Yes. Yep. Thank you.
So then you would only submit three to them?
Correct. I'll submit three to the ODE, but I will still present to you guys five. Yep.
Because you're awesome like that.
Well.
We're already doing it. You know, one day, maybe go back to five, and you have to adjust it again. Might as well keep doing that.
I know, but you're onto too much information. Thank you for doing that.
Anybody have any questions or feedback about anything? All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, nay. Hearing none, the motion passes.
Because some of those things are payment-related, I think that we have to do a roll call for any votes about payment or claims.
Okay.
That's just to.
We can do that as well. This would be double, double standard.
There you go.
All right, roll call, please.
Mr. Alboni?
Yes.
Mrs. Pembroke?
Yes.
Mr. Dickey?
Yes.
Scouted?
Yes.
Jeffrey?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, we are on to the resolution authorizing the constructing, improving furnishing, and equipping of school facilities. Kelly, would you like to explain?
Yes, if I can motion in a second, then I'll explain it.
Very good. I will make a motion to approve Resolution 20643374-V4. The resolution authorizing the constructing, improving, furnishing, and equipping of school facilities. Could I get a second, please? Just a second. Thank you.
So as we are getting ready to, going further and further down the path of design for the middle school addition, I am now beginning the process of getting documents prepared to go out and borrow the funds for it. So this resolution, the board is allowing me to go out. Pretty much are playing with numbers. How much to, how much to borrow, at what rate, what payback? And so there's a not to exceed of, not to exceed a borrowing of 15 million, And so there's a not to exceed of, not to exceed a borrowing of 15 million, not to exceed a 15-year payback. So it's just then me going and playing with the numbers with, with the investment people and my reps of what is best for the payout when it comes to the five-year forecast, when it comes to looking down the road, when it comes to interest rates and it all. It is, and then we decide when to price it to the market, October, November, December, with the conclusion being before the end of the calendar year because I will be signing, I have to have the funds in hand prior to signing contracts. And so right now, we're tentatively on track to sign construction contracts early 2026. So I have to have the funds in the hands to sign those contracts for the construction team. So once we decide what's best, I will come back with a much more in-depth legal package.
Okay. So this is, this is essentially just to authorize you to start marketing the bonds?
Correct. Correct.
And this is the company that advises us?
So yeah, so I have a bond counsel. So Booker is a bond counsel on this. And then I have a financial market that pretty much prepares all the documents, gets ready with attorneys to, when I decide to sell it to the open market, everything's ready. Like I'll have to do in a couple of weeks, a ratings call with S and P or Moody's. And they pretty much interview me as behalf of the district to find stability, make sure that they, their investors are going to get their money back and there's, there's no issues there. So this is a process I did with the elementary schools. When that bond passed, I had the same, same documents I'd prepare. Like I said, it's like an interview, they interview you to make sure that the risk is not outweighing the benefit, the interest rate that they're making on their behalf. Yep.
We also have any questions? Let's go ahead and get a roll call, please.
Sure. Mr. Algoody?
Yes.
Mrs. Pepper?
Yes.
Mr. Dickie?
Yes.
Mr. Scouted?
Yes.
Jeffrey?
Yes.
Right, we are on to discussion items. Academic fees. Tom, you've requested a discussion about this, something that I kind of wanted to discuss as well, so.
Yes. So, you know, last year, taxes went up about 40% on everybody. And we said, well, we didn't ask for it, what do you want from us? You know, we already have a surplus, but we didn't ask for it, but you know, but now we have families who are paying about $60,000, right, in academic fees. And I think that should be taken off. It's less than 1% of the overage that we have. And why are we taking money that we don't need? We're not in any kind of trouble financially. You might say, well, we want to build a school. Okay, well, we can just save up for the next 40 years, the overage that we have, and get a school. Or we can give relief to people right now who need it, who are suffering right now, whose taxes are high and on top of that, have to pay academic fees, that have to pay to play sports and other things as well. I think the academic fees should be gone permanently. And the sports fees should be gone one year at a time. And they can be voted on annually to put them back on if we need the money or not. But if it's less than 1% of the money that is an overage, what's the problem with giving relief to families?
So the number for all the academic fees, this is across all four buildings, K-12? Or is this, do we have any fees associated with preschool? Would that be included in that or would this just be K-12?
That's not included in that. Preschool is a separate, like tuition fee.
Okay.
Yep.
Now, included in academic fees, is that also fees for maybe AP courses, CCP courses? Does that include all of that?
Yes.
Okay. And that looks like it was just shy of 119,000 or less.
Correct. So just break it down even further for you. Out of the 118,000 that we taxed in student fees last year, 85,000 came from the high school, which is all of your art fees, industrial tech fees, computer fees, your high school tech fee, which Kathy collects to offset the cost of replacing Chromebooks. So, so majority of the 118,000, 85,000 is coming from the high school based on the academic course that they take.
Were those fees initially put on because we needed the money?
I can't answer that. They, these fees have been here since I've been here. And I think they've been pretty similar price last couple of years that I've been here at least two, we haven't raised them. But like with the high school fees, it's all broken on in what class, biology, that specific, what they need.
How are those funds distributed and allocated? What do those?
So they're used for the.
Who spends those?
They're used for the supplies in the classroom that they need for, again, biology, chemistry, art supplies. It's based off of, it's given, it's given to the high school to purchase it and to perform the curriculum. The supply is establishment of the curriculum that they're teaching.
Is it based on what the teachers need the students to have?
Correct.
To complete the course? In which case, why, what, what's the problem now with, why, why doesn't the district supply those materials? Why do the teachers have to ask for extra?
So it's the consumables for the, for the class, like for the younger grades. It's like the workbooks, it's the stuff that, it's the classic stuff that comes in that the child uses.
That's generally included in our price of the curriculum though, right? Like the workbooks, we purchase X amount of those.
You'd have to talk to Brian about the whole, what he gets in this whole curriculum.
Brian, is that correct? Like with our curriculum, do we, we purchase X amount of workbooks in anticipation of trying? Or do we repurchase those every year for our classes?
As we've done new adoption, if I've been in this position, we will purchase, we project ahead with enrollment, repurchase for a discount.
And so that's included in the initial purchase price?
No, it's not. It's a renewal rate every year.
It would, no. For example, when we purchase C K L A, we purchase all the consumables we project needed for that, for that system adoption. So the only programs we have not done that for are science and math. Science is up this year, math is up following.
Okay.
But then, I mean, as Kelly knows.
There's been some vendors where you set a five-year contract and every year you have to re-up and spend 20, 30,000 to get 500 workbooks.
Or enroll with those.
Yeah.
To Mary Kate's question, kind of to piggyback on what you were asking about. So let's just say for discussion purposes, high school art pays, student pays $100. Does that go into a high school art supply purchasing fund?
Yes.
So it goes into a designated fund for that class?
Correct. They each have their own, their own account codes. And when the secretary receives the money and/or the parents pay online, it deposits right into that special account code that I assigned behind the scenes.
So if that money wasn't there, then we would just do a count and move that money into there?
If that money was in there, then, so this is, so we call it an 009 fund, it's not a general fund. So if the money is not in there, then the general fund would have to supplant it, transfer it, do whatever you need to do.
22 students, we move that much?
Correct. Correct. Yes. Someone would have to pay for it.
Either the parents pay for it separately or they pay for it already out of their taxes and property and income tax they've already paid.
Is there, is there a benefit for, say, a flexibility or, I don't know, you know, fungibility or something for having the payment come from parents rather than from the district? Or purchasing these supplies?
I mean, no, the vendor doesn't care where the money comes from, as long as the money comes. Yeah, I mean, that's a decision of the board if they want to take that cost on themselves or if they want to assign it as a classroom fee, which is.
Well, I guess on that note, like around those lines with like their transaction fees on these things, I may get what.
They pay online? Yes. Oh, like, well, there's no transaction fees if, I mean, obviously district to vendor, it's a different conversation. But like if you go, if you're a high school student, you went on and you paid all your high school fees.
So are we factoring that into the fee?
No, because I don't, we don't collect the fee.
You know, I meant for the amount we're asking, like we set our amounts.
That, that would be in addition to whatever.
It'd be in addition to whatever they need it. Like if the work with $5, we charge 650 if we know. But, but in reality is that when you go to checkout on pay schools, this eye, Buckeye Valley, I never see the transaction fee being deposited. Actually, what the district does is that we, behind the scenes, we actually, the board, when we established the pay schools years ago, the board agreed to pay 50% of the associated fees of the month. So every month, I post an expense to the district, general fund side of half of all the fees. That was, we, the district offset that month to the parents. So like, when you go online and pay your pay school fees, that's not really the total fee. The district is back ending half of that fee already.
Do you have that number available?
Every month it varies. Obviously, August is going to be significant more, the students are paying their fees. It could range anywhere between 2,000 to 3,000 a month. That the general fund is, is picking up that tab, I guess you could say, to offset. Again, it was a way that when the district did do pay schools, how many years ago at this point? The convenience outweighed the cost. And so the district at the time said, well, let's, let's finally have a meeting and we'll pay half of the fees at that point.
So we, we potentially as a district are paying 20,000 a year in fees, as well as our families are paying 20,000 in fees.
Correct.
So we're talking 40,000 in fees to collect 119,000.
The district, as you know, doesn't receive.
Correct, right, no, I, I get it. That's just what's paid to process that money.
Correct. Correct.
That's, I didn't, I didn't realize it was that much.
Do those fees also, are, are they also part of cafeteria?
So if you go online and you put in like cafeteria and your kids' high school sports and, I mean, high school class fee and a third grader's fee, you do it all together, one transaction, you charge your transaction fee. Correct. But it, it's a, I won't say one-stop shopping, but it's a, it's a one-stop. You can pay all that and then we're working on to get, we're working to get paid to participate on there as well as preschool on there. So again, is that if you have a preschool or second grader, fourth grader, you can go online in August and go boom, 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 and you're done with everything and have your cafeteria money on your child's account.
So they're, they're, to, to say that it's for 100 and some thousand dollars isn't quite accurate because there's also like food services and.
Different accounts. Yep. So like this is just academic fees. School cafeteria is an 006 fund. And then, again, if you go on and put your money into your child's fund and say a dual high school fee, behind the scenes, my computer system knows that $50 goes into 009 for fees and then 100 bucks goes into 006 for cafeteria. And then at the end of the month, when I go to reconcile, I post those into the appropriate funds so I could show what revenue is for that month per fund.
Were you, were you asking about the associated fees for putting the money into the accounts?
Yes.
The fees that the parent and the district pay could be for putting money onto kids' lunch accounts, potentially up and coming pay-to-play fees if we get those added to pay schools. So the associated, we'll call them the cost to use pay schools is more than just school fees for classes. It's also for putting money onto kids' lunch accounts currently. That's the only other thing that we're utilizing.
I mean, between the 006 and 009, the district is probably collecting close to a million dollars a year in revenue through pay schools.
Okay.
Just saying, yeah. Yeah. Like ACHs have no fee, right? But like.
So a transaction fee though?
Correct, but they don't have, yeah, but then credit card has a credit card fee, yes. So it, it depends on how you do it, pretty much.
So if somebody uses a credit card, does the school pay a portion of that fee as well?
Correct.
So with some of these fees being for, being for classes that not everybody has to take, like they're taking.
Correct. Correct. It's not, yes.
Is, my concern is that in the future, there could be disagreements about which classes deserve these funds that right now they're being paid for by the students who elect to take them. And, you know, in the future, are there going to be conversations about, well, this art class is not worth this extra money that we're putting in and we're going to put, we're going to put our foot down and we're going to cancel this art class? Or these kids don't need to take this AP test? And there's, there's not enough people taking this AP course? So.
As I say, it helps also, we've been paying for like AP and SAT assessments the last several years for anyone who wants to take them. I will say the high school, the funds are more. Elementary, middle school, at my department, working with Kelly, pretty much pays for the tier one, the core curriculum materials. So I give the buildings their workbooks, their textbooks, online subscription to what they need. The high school, which is more instructor specific, as they build their courses each year, they directly access those funds for that specific class. At the elementary, for example, the principal uses that pot of money more for building copy paper, laminating, large, large bulk supplies like that, but it's not as specific to like, so reading workbook, the math workbook, if that, if that makes sense. So the fees are used in a much different way at the high school than they are elementary and middle.
I would love to get the input of the, the teachers and the principals who are accessing these funds and what it might mean if it's a, a part of the, like the general funds instead of an 009 fund?
I don't think it would mean anything for them because the district's still going to pay for them.
Yeah.
Whatever they need, the district's just going to pay for it versus having the family's deposit money.
We don't even know the reason why we started doing it this way.
This is not a question if we don't have these fees, we don't have the classes. The question is, is that if we don't have these fees, is the board willing to eat the 120,000 over here in the forecast? That's pretty much right, Tom, when I kind of understand any of this. So that, so like the input of the teachers, their, their second effects to their daily life. They're still going to disguise they need to teach a course that they are teaching.
I just think personally it's a bad look if we do that because we go to, we need a high school. I just, I just caution everybody to, if we take this away and then we go to the taxpayers, what kind of look does that?
Building a school's going to cost you 200 million dollars. You can't save enough money to build a school.
I know, but.
And they're being overtaxed and we agree they're being overtaxed because from the 40% one, and the first thing we said in this room was, well, we didn't ask for it, you know, it's nice to have it, but we didn't ask for it. And everyone's like, man, I gotta pay all, all this extra money. Well, they're paying all this extra money, we didn't ask for it, we have an overage. They already voted no to a school. If they're going to vote yes to a school, it's going to be its own separate money. It's impossible to save enough money to build a school because you have to save for 40 years at the current rate if the school price didn't go up. So it's like that money is just sitting there not being used, going into a fund. And the people are going without stuff. I, I worked with someone who told me that their kids don't play sports because they don't want to pay the fees. But we want more people to participate in sports, we want more spirit and all that kind of stuff. But then people aren't doing it because it costs too much and we don't need the money.
I guess that's really what it boils down to, Kelly, is.
I mean, 140,000 is a lot of money. I know in the grand scheme of millions, it's not, but.
119 is. I mean, that's.
It's a lot of money.
Very easily be a couple of teachers. In our current projections, we are operating at a surplus annually though, especially once we get the bonds for the middle school addition and get that worked in, correct?
I know, I would say, I mean, I get, I get what you're, what you're saying there. Well, I mean, it is, it is tough and you can spend it either way. I, I think for me to consider it, I, I mean, I like the gesture of mine, but I think, I, I would not be wanting to say in depth. And I'd say this has to be made at your basis. You never know if any situation could change. There's a lot of factors there. So I think I would, if we're going to, if we do go forward this, I think it should be made at your basis.
For what, both?
Yeah, I think, yeah, I just, I mean, again, you just don't know. Our form will change and we get, I mean, we know obviously growth is coming, but I don't know, I would, I'd hate to say definitely.
I mean, yeah. Maybe look at the sports differently just because I know a lot of programs that are doing like adopt a bear in kind of thing to like help with that, the student that maybe can't afford to play, that, you know, to raise money for, to be able to help them out. I mean, I think, I don't know. I don't want to say sporting is, is any different, but there's, I know some of the coaches are doing that. So I don't know.
It'd be great to see the district set up some sort of fund or inquiry process where a family that would otherwise not participate in sports because of financial strains could come to the district and say, hey, our kid really wants to do this, but we just can't swing it.
But may, maybe that they can swing it, but they don't want to because they feel that the cost is high. That's a situation that I dealt with recently with somebody. They said, well, we have this many kids and they want to play this many sports and I'm not paying that. I'm okay with going to year by year and see how things, things go.
I think too, I think that, you know, setting up some kind of fund or system, I guess, of sports is good. I guess too, I look at the difference, I guess, I know academically we said it's top-heavy at the high school level, but I feel at least to academic, we can kind of impact majority of our families that way, right? Versus, I guess sports would be a little bit more narrow. I'm going to say if we're going to do one thing, it seems like it makes sense to kind of spread that most.
Sports would be focused on seven to 12.
Yeah.
If we're trying to provide some level of relief to our taxpayers, the academic fees would touch every family that has kids enrolled in the district.
It couldn't just be sports too, it'd have to include performing arts?
Pay to participate, that would include performing arts as well?
Correct.
Yeah, so that would be seven, 12, marching band, choir.
And those all included in that?
Yeah.
So between the two, you're talking 235, 236,000, almost 237.
What does that do to the teams? Like, can?
I guess that's a question I'm going to have to, I'm going to throw out there for a little while, something is, this is, this, if this is feasible, the hardest part is, right now is that I've had families pay for fees this year and I've had families pay for play-to-play. My department would have to turn around and issue refunds to everybody. And that's a significant ask. I'm not saying this is not a great conversation, it's just so hard to do it in. But maybe in the school.
We brought this up three or four months ago. It, it's been delayed. I, I say refund them.
And all due respect, I, I get that, but you're just, you're saying it, it's just me turning around and to do it and asking my staff to do that right now in doing everything else we're doing and getting ready for the start of school. And I'm not saying that going forward, planning it, it can be done. It's just saying this, this is not an easy, okay, we're doing it and then tomorrow I have to ask my department to go back and do it.
We can remove them now and say it's going to be two months before you get them back. Give, give them time, doesn't have, have to be one day turnaround time.
What academic has been collected so far?
So the high school ones haven't been loaded because they don't get loaded until after fair week because of, they're still finalizing, the high schools are still finalizing their kids' schedules for the academics. But I know like the K eights, those are loaded come August 1st, when Power School opens again. So I don't know off the top of my head how much has been collected in those, in those grades, off the top of my head.
And that's through, they would be loaded on pay schools, right?
Correct. Just for your K eights. Just for your K eight, because again, the high school, they don't load until usually about fair week, when they realize is when they finalize.
Yeah, I was on fees, here we go. Yeah, they have been loaded.
Which if they haven't been paid, that's an easy wipe, wipe off the system. That's, the issue is that you have the people that like many of the parents probably are looking at on this table, that August first comes on, you go on, you pay your fee. And now it's just, and then making sure that we didn't, we've, we refunded this year's fee and that, what if you didn't pay last year to make sure that you still have that fee outstanding on your balance? So it's, it's not an easy flip the switch and it's done. And I, I don't think that you think that, but it's just seeing it out loud and the concept of it is there's a little discrepancy.
So all the K eight fees are sixty bucks a student, correct?
Correct.
I get what you're saying, Tom, I just, I don't think it's wise. Um, I think we can maybe talk about the sports and the performing arts reduction maybe, but I think we need like coaches' feedback on that too. Because like I said, I know a lot of those programs do stuff that maybe we can reduce that piece of it. But as far as the school piece goes, I think we're silly to, I just, I mean, I wouldn't be in.
Well, I, I disagree. I mean, you're basically telling people, we have extra money that we're not using, we're not going to give it back to you. And by the way, in so many months, we're going to ask you for more.
Are you talking about our cash balance at the end of the year?
Talking about the, the amount of money that we bring in versus the amount of money that we spend every year. Is that a surplus?
Well, you need a surplus to do things like cover.
I'm not saying give all of it, that's silly, right? I'm saying we're talking about a few percent here. And you guys can't give a few percent to people who are already aggravated with paying too much. And we already said we don't need it, but you're not going to give it back. But then if somebody needs a raise, then we, we give them a raise, we don't care, it's not a big deal. I got a zero percent raise this year, but my fees, I still have to pay my fees, my taxes still went up. So you're saying, okay, it's okay, we're going to hold this money just in case we need it, but we don't need it, but we're not going to give any back to you. That's what I'm saying.
I didn't realize we'd already collected fees for school fees this year.
I guess loaded once Power School rolls over to the next calendar, next school year.
That's a small percentage of the fees though.
It is, that is the smaller portion of the fees. The middle and elementary were about thirty-four thousand of the total amount is what we were talking about.
It's only been two weeks, so what percent of that's been paid? It's not a big deal to send out checks.
I have it.
You know, you can say it'll be three months, you know?
Yeah, but it's, I mean, I, I'm with you, but issuing checks and mailing out checks, stamps, checks, time, um, versus if you could just load, if you load a credit onto the account, their only option then would be to use it for school lunches. Since they can't do it for pay, pay to play yet.
You could also give them a choice. And maybe the majority would say, put it on there as a credit.
Also, if we did a credit, if we don't take like pay to play for now, then you could just accrue for credit for that, right? For lunches, so we'd have options. We just said just.
A lot of logistics. I'm not saying it can't be done, but it's a lot of logistics. So now, now I went from writing checks to crediting the pay to plays to then now calling and asking that they want a pay to play's opinion on where they want their fees back. So again, it's, it's, and I, my accounts payable, a person is one person who also needs to pay my bills every month. Um, so again, I'm not saying it can't be done, I'm just saying is that adding more layers to options is, is significant.
And I don't, I, I personally don't. I love the idea of kids not having to pay to play in sports, but I know that that started twenty-five, thirty years ago, pay to participate. Um, and that doesn't touch every family in our district either. It, it's a significant amount of money, but again, we're trying to offer relief to our taxpayers, something that touches everyone that has a kid in the district, I feel like is, is the right move. And we might have just been behind the, the eight ball this year, I don't know. I.
I would need it done by Kelly to, without making it interesting like here, like if this is something we looked at.
For this year, like for next year? Like if this is a conversation, you know, February, March, um, just me, us going into knowing that when Power School does flip over in early August, is that those fees, those fees do not get loaded onto the account. Pretty much the board then will come back in the spring or summer and say for the twenty-sixth, twenty-seventh school year, the Board of Education has decided to waive all academic fees K through twelve for the district. And at that point, then nothing gets loaded onto anyone's Power School account, um, when we go live.
And that's something I feel should probably be on a year to year basis, so. Are, are you able to find out? Kelly, how, how much we've how many fees we've taken in thus far?
I'm going to try to look right now.
I always forget on pay schools because meals and fees are two separate. I just, yeah.
I'd have to run a report off of pay schools, um, to see. I'd have more when I'm going to close out August, obviously because school started last week.
Can you try and get that information to us by the end of this week? That way, if, you know, we feel the need that this is something that we want to move forward with, we could potentially call a special meeting, um, to make that decision before you say it's after fair is when the high school fees get loaded.
Correct.
Uh, which, or next week.
Here's, here's another option for you, do it for high school this year and for everyone next year.
Which high school is your bulk?
To nothing in high school, obviously.
Nothing in the high school.
Yeah.
So the high school is eighty-five thousand of the hundred and eighteen thousand that we are collecting.
About, sorry, I apologize for my, I just went off kids on my, yeah. When, when is pay for play, is that just prior to the season or like?
Yes, they have to pay a prior to the start. So the athletic director establishes the day that the funds are due. Correct.
And I know with the performing arts, they're pretty, they usually set out a schedule, some of them can be fairly expensive. I have show flyers, rather expensive, marching band is expensive and they usually do a pay schedule and throughout the year. These are the target days, hundred fifty this day, two fifty this day, balance due.
Imagine giving more people that potential to be in performing arts, to be in band. I mean, I remember we were renting all those instruments that we were, it's like hundreds of dollars a month. And then fees on top of that and everything, just let people have that opportunity, open those doors for the kids to be able to play sports, to be able to perform, do other things. I mean, you give them confidence and they'll make them into better people. All over money that you don't have to have right now.
Yep.
Well, I was going to say, would that be a feasible alternative, do you do a reduction in those fees? With just fall having been in support for athletes performing arts, is that, is that an option?
So pay to participate is one fifty. Right now, and so like the fall sports, I believe they collected them all, or they should have been collected already prior to because the season has started. Like the fall play, fall play, right, and spring musical, if I have this. Okay, those might have not been collected yet because they haven't started the.
So the only one we could realistically look at if we wanted to do something this school year would be the high school school fees. Because of collection of other things already.
I think that's a good step and then next spring you go on the rest of it and see how this is going and.
I mean, on the agenda, there wasn't a vote about this, there was a discussion item.
We can put a vote on there.
Obviously, the longer you wait, the worse it's going to be, the, you know, we've already gotten in this deep and we can't do the elementary level. We don't want to keep pushing it out. Let's put a vote on for today and if you vote no, vote no.
So would we do a vote, Mary Kate, are you familiar, would we need to do a vote first to change it from a discussion to an action item?
You'd have to do a vote to amend the agenda.
And then we would have to take a vote on the waiving of the school fees for the twenty-five, twenty-sixth school year. That would be just at the high school level.
Correct.
Yep. Yep, so I'll need a motion to amend the agenda.
I moved to amend the agenda to add the vote for the removal of the academic fees for the high school for this year.
All right. Yeah, second?
I'll second.
All right. Motion and second. To amend the agenda, to allow for a vote on the academic fees, roll call, please.
Mr. Alwenny?
Yes.
Mrs. Henbrock?
No.
Mr. Dickey?
Yes.
Mrs. Gavin?
No.
Ms. Jeffrey?
Yes.
All right, the motion is passed, three to two. So now there will be a vote after a motion and a second to waive the high school school fees for the twenty-five, twenty-sixth school year.
So.
All right, there's been a motion, I get a second, please.
To amend the agenda after it's already been adopted requires a two-thirds vote. And that's four of five.
That would be correct. Therefore, the motion to amend the agenda has not passed. Thank you, Mary Kate. All right. Well, if there's no further discussion regarding that, we can certainly revisit it in the future in our next meeting. If any two members want to come forward and have a special meeting on that, we certainly can do that as well. So we will move on to our public participation on non-agenda items. I believe we have Ms. Candy Staley up first.
Candy Staley, twenty-two, fifteen, County of One Price Six, Carleton. Thank you for this opportunity. Um, just a few things I want to highlight. I've heard really good things about the start of the school year. So it's nice to see that kids are back and in. Um, I'm going to ding the bell about public participation again. Your policy says noon of the day of the board meeting, but you have cards out there, so it's a contradiction. So decide one way or the other. I think the public should be allowed to comment at those times. And sometimes you don't know that you want to comment until you've discussed things. So I'm just going to ding that bell again. I did talk with Dr. Stranges about job descriptions. It would be nice to have on the school website what the job descriptions are for like the administrators because I couldn't find it anywhere, just about the superintendent and the treasurer. It's nice to see that there's more people taking an interest in the Board of Education seats. I thank those of you that are already serving April, like I hate to see you go, but I understand. And then Dr. Stranges, you said something about an organizational chart, I have no idea what that was in reference to.
Shows who's in our organization and what, what they're responsible for.
Okay, all right, thank you. Um, and then the last thing, I didn't know what the discussion, how it was going to go about school fees, but as a taxpayer, as a grandparent, as a parent, as a former employee, I started in nineteen seventy-nine, there were school fees then. So if you wanted a reference point, there's that as well. It's my understanding that kids that qualify for free and reduced, do they get?
They don't pay.
They don't pay fees, okay. There's a new organization, Neighborhood Bridges or Neighbor Bridges, uh, which would be a great organization to hit up about the participation fees. I, I have a concern since the coaches and that, how's that going to affect their, um, their programs? And then since you, well, it didn't pass, but where would the money come from in the budget if the fees were, were waived? And then what do other school districts do? What do they do around here? There's no, maybe that would be good information to have. And then finally, and this will show my age, but you can still pay by check, can't you? Yeah, okay, thank you.
That big walnut just removed all their fees.
Okay, thank you.
And I did pay by check tonight, I didn't realize I had school fees though, because it's not the same tab. All right. Huh? No, it's fine, you can take that one, it's worthless to me now. Uh, Mr. Kayler. Appreciate our public participants being patient with us.
Mark Kayler, forty-one, fifty-five, Leonard's Road Road, Delaware, Ohio. I don't really have a group affiliate with this apparent. Some lucky Valley students. I guess I just kind of want to formally complain about the use of laptops as a primary, uh, learning tool. I've been trying to get on board with it for a few years now, but I just I'm just not seeing it. I feel like it's creating like a, a barrier between parents and their students' education. Like we're, we're almost kind of left in the dark to some extent as to what the curriculum is. I know it's a good tool to submit homework or write papers because maybe not everybody has a computer at home to use, but to seemingly have it as the primary tool for learning seems kind of unwise, I guess, in my opinion. Like our, my son or daughter comes up and is struggling with something math related or could be anything. There's really nothing for us to reference, I guess, to kind of help them learn something maybe in a different way from a parent. I mean, everybody learns a little bit differently, but I just don't know if that would have been my primary tool, just going through school, I would have been misusing that, which I know a lot of kids do. I would have been looking at ESPN or whatever, the temptation's just going to be there where if you're sitting there with a notebook, you don't really have near as many options. But I just, maybe it's just me, uh, growing up with that, maybe that's part of the, the reason, but I know some coworkers that are engineers and they're still referencing hydraulic textbooks from college for work, so I just don't know. We could entirely get away from it, but it'd be nice. We could entirely get away from it, but it'd be nice if there were options. Like if you want to take home a textbook or something like that, or maybe just something to put out there for parents to, to kind of be more in tune with, with what's going on. Instead of, like I said, feeling like we're kind of left in the dark with the very, this electronic barrier between us and our children's learning. So. That's all I had. Thank you.
Thank you.
Brian, they can take home textbooks if they want to, right?
Yes, we typically, if it's available, when we do an adoption, we buy at least one class set of textbooks so that kids can access them if they want to. And most of our programs do have, and we can always do a better job, you know, always thinking about having regular nights or something like that. Uh, helping parents understand the parent resource tools that are within our programs as well. And I know I work daily with Cassie in her department, trying to make sure that firewalls are, are up and safety guards are in place so that kids can't.
No ESPN.
By respect, I mean, I respect the kids are always, as soon as we have a fix in place.
They find the next one. They do.
I, I get that.
From what I've heard this year, from my kids complaining is that they have maybe put even more restrictions on this year. I, I personally understand that this is a part of today's life, but not everybody's life is going to revolve around this. Kelly's probably revolves around it more than say a tradesperson does. My life does not revolve around my computer. It's typically my evenings when it comes to invoicing and billing and such. I've, I found it interesting, this year, my seventh grader is doing work on his laptop, however, on a paper, he has to show his work. And my thought is, why not just do it as a worksheet? So I, I mean, I very much am for, like, when our kids do everything on this, they are not writing well. They are not, I mean, they may be reading, but when it comes to reading a text, it's different than reading from a backlight as well. So.
It's good to have workbooks because you can take those with you at the end of the year. But I agree, I like paper too. I, I'm in technology and I don't, I don't like having these, but that's what's available these days.
Well, I guess too, Brian, to just kind of go back to what you said, can we, can we look at, because like my understanding is we do have some of these programs we're using, like Alex, for example, that doesn't have hard copy options. I feel like that's a situation we're running into because I mean, I do think no one wants to talk about it. Technology addiction is a real thing. So for some of our families, like we need to keep Chromebooks at school for that reason. But then we're told, well, there's no alternative for Alex, so it's got to come home. And I think that's, that's, that feels like an intrusion to me. And I guess that's to, I think to what Mr. Kaler was saying, that's one of the things we need to look at.
Yeah, I'll say there's a constant discussion always between my department and the buildings on what the intended purpose is of the, some of the programs that we purchased. So some things we've purchased, most of our materials that we purchased that are online only are really meant for enrichment or remediation at times practice. But they're never meant, they don't have any core one, like core resource that's only online. And I know some people have differences, have opinions on that. But when we do the math adoption, and I'm not trying to chalk it all up math, but as we've done adoption for the last few years, we've tried to be very cognizant of the blend, which does put the price up, which Kelly works with me on. You know, CPLA is another example. And our social studies programs that we have last year will have been much cheaper if we only did the online option. We always opt if there's available workbooks to give them, textbooks, have a classroom set. And when we do the math adoption, we definitely need to look at making sure we're having hard copy, we're having manipulatives. Donald's point, it's important, kids still need to show their work, especially in math, so that we know what they're doing. And with AI out there, it's more important than ever that we're having kids do things offline. We can see their thought process and we can see where they started with the unit and ended with the unit. And we can see their, their progression of thinking so that we know it's them and not AI. So all that's very applicable to what we're working with.
I would like to see, does Alex have any non-digital option?
So I see Alex as a complete online, again, meant to be a supplemental resource.
Cause Alex is not a friendly name in our house. I'll tell you that much. Amber fills it too.
I understand, and I have CPM is meant to be the, the main resource in middle school for math, except fifth grade, which should still do bridges. And CPM, when that was purchased, it was for me, but there are textbooks that go with that. There are tutorials that go with that. It has not been the, the most well adopted program in our district. So some people have chosen to take some supplemental materials and use them for more core materials than intended. So that is definitely part of the weakness. Originally math was up for this year. And I'm very excited to get to math. We purposely delayed it a year because the state is doing a lot of work with their expectations around math, similar to science and reading. And we expect that the state is going to come out with some guidelines, if not suggested programs, such as they did with reading. And I didn't want to do that, have that come out one year after we do an adoption. But I'm very aware, especially in middle school, about math and Alex.
And I, I would, I would personally, as a board member, I would love to see. The thing I don't want to have is I don't want to have tensions arising at home. Because kids are struggling with whatever it is that they're, you know, supposed to do. It's not really great, but it's required and they're struggling with it. And then the parents looking at it and they're like, just, I, I never did it like this. I can't help you figure it out. And then it creates this stress at home. And then the teachers are getting messages on Parents Square and it just becomes stress. I don't feel, like, I feel like we can avoid that additional stress at home. So I would love if the district could look into something and maybe it even is with this Alex or Bridges. I know it is purely a supplemental program, but maybe making it something where it counts as extra credit or not a you're getting dinged. I know there was a push at the end of the year, last year with one of my children, where it was, this has to be done or you will not participate in whatever it was, field day or the, the final trip. It was like, this has to be at a hundred percent or else. And that was not a pleasant week and a half in my home, I can tell you that. And I imagine other parents can probably say they've had similar situations happen. So.
Yeah, I, I will work on that.
And I know we're already into the school year too, so I'm not asking you to like change everything right away. But if it's something that we can look at as a district, it would be great.
That's not the intended purpose of that program.
I wouldn't think you would intentionally try to put me at odds with my children at all. So, thank you, Brian. Thanks for your information on that. Moving forward, I don't believe we have executive session. I would like to, I know this wasn't as a discussion, I know, but we're all here right now. Our evaluation criteria for superintendent and treasurer. Mary Kate had suggested earlier this year, potentially bringing in a rep from BASA or OSBA or somebody to help us put that evaluative criteria together. I know we also pulled some samples from neighboring districts. If we can get somebody to come, would you all be willing to have a special work session to work with that individual to get that criteria placed so that we could do our evaluations in the September board meeting for our superintendent?
Yes. That's a great way to do it.
Okay. Very good. So we will be in touch if we can get something set up with somebody coming in from the outside. We'll reach out to everybody and see if we can get a date that works. And if that ends up being the case, we'll advertise and have a work session. Anything else from anybody? We're off and running. Thanks for being here tonight, everybody. I will make a motion to adjourn the meeting. All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, say nay. Hearing none, the meeting is adjourned.